Okay, thanks, everybody. My name is Dan Driscoll. I'm the town meeting moderator. And we appreciate your taking time to tune into this meeting this evening. The purpose of this meeting is to give a little bit more of an explanation about the virtual town meeting. So we would expect that most of the questions would have to do with process and how to navigate during town meeting. If you have a question about one of the warrant articles, if it's something that we can answer quickly, we will do that. But the warrant review meeting was really the place where the specifics and the background on those articles was addressed. I'll also point out that there is an additional forum tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, specifically devoted to the public safety building article. That's Article 14 in your warrant book. There has been one evening already where that was discussed and the select board and town manager have decided to open one more meeting so that people can ask their questions. Well, it became clear to us that the hoped-for progress on COVID did not materialize in time for us to have a regular town meeting at the Denham High School. We had a successful open-air meeting in August at the Denham High School field, but clearly for a meeting aimed at November 30th, we needed a different approach. What we found out was is that towns are doing what we're doing in most cases, and that is doing virtual or remote town meetings using the Zoom platform. So we started preparing for this in the late summer. Cheryl Anne Sheehan, the deputy moderator, and I attended an online program that featured folks from a number of towns that had successfully done virtual town meetings using Zoom. So we listened to them. We learned a lot, heard what worked, what didn't work. Then, starting in August of this year, we gathered a group of 12 town officials to begin our planning work. And we have been meeting every week since that August initial meeting. In addition to these meetings and the online seminar, I participated in an online discussion group with other town moderators who are wrestling with the mechanics of doing a virtual town meeting. So there's a lot to be picked up, picked up on that. So what have we done? And what are we doing? Well, I do want to say that our goal, the goal of the 12 of us who have been working on this, has been to make the virtual experience as close as possible to the real experience that we experience every year at our town meeting. We're doing that as best we can within the limitations of the technology. So there are some things that Zoom won't do that we would like them to do. And in one case, we even got somebody to place a call and talk with some of the folks at the Zoom headquarters, and they weren't able to, they weren't able to do what we wanted to do. And there are other limitations. In addition to the technical limitations, there is something lost when people are not sitting together, looking at each other, talking to each other. It's amazing how many nonverbal cues we use to get through a process like town meeting. So as moderator, I obviously upfront at the podium, looking out at the, at the group of town meeting representatives, there's a lot of verbal cues that I pick up. I feel like I'm doing this town meeting with blindfolds on because I'm not going to be able to see any of that. So what have we done? Well, the first thing we realized is that we needed to have access to email addresses because there's a lot of communication that's been going on in order to make this meeting workable for people. So thanks to the diligence of the district chairs, we were able to collect town meeting representative email addresses on a very wide and consistent scale, which is not something that the town has, has done in the past. So we have received 99% of all the email addresses that are available. We do have several town meeting members who do not use email. So we were very fortunate that we were able to collect 99%. By having that kind of participation, and we thank you for cooperating with that, that enabled us to first send out a survey to find out how many of you had some experience with Zoom? How many of you had the ability to participate in this meeting with the equipment that you had? Did you need training? Did you need assistance with equipment? So we had very good participation in that survey. And once we had that survey and began to finalize our plans or refine our plans, we made the decision to bring in some outside expert assistance. So Emily Torres Colonnain, who's the host of the meeting, the woman who's been speaking to you, is from MAPC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and she has several other staff who have been working with her, assisting us. And she is one of the few in the state who has actually participated as an organizer in a virtual town meeting, because this is all very, very new, new to us. We're also fortunate that our town council, Lauren Goldberg, has participated in a number of virtual town meetings in her role as town council to other towns. So between the experience that Emily and her, there are two key staff people that are working with Emily, Alando and Christian, as well as Lauren's contributions, we've been able to answer a lot of questions. And then, once again, the staff from the Denham Public Library who assisted us at the outdoor meeting, the meetings leading up to the outdoor meeting, because we had virtual meetings in preparation, they've stepped up again. And Amber Maroni has been tremendous help to us, spending a lot of, a lot of evenings sitting with, sitting with the people that you see as panelists, because we're the ones that are on all these meetings each night. So what have we done? Based on the survey results, we set up a series of six training sessions. We did four of them on the evening. We did one during the day, and we did one on a Saturday morning, trying to accommodate people's different lifestyles and work schedules. We had some very solid participation in those sessions. In addition, we offered individual coaching to people, and we used some of the people you see on the screen today, as well as there were some town meeting representatives who volunteered to be available for individual coaching. And we also, as I mentioned, have, in several cases, assisted people with equipment. The district chairs, under the leadership of Jim Driscoll, the chair of the chairs this year, conducted the regular warrant review meeting on Zoom. So the mini-town meeting was conducted on Zoom, and Amber Maroni was the behind-the-scenes person assisting on that. Next, we did two forums. We'll have done one and one tomorrow night on the public safety building, because that is really the biggest issue on this year's warrant. So we've had two sessions devoted entirely just to answering your questions about the public safety building, one last week and one tomorrow. And you can get the link if you go to the town. First of all, you've received numerous emails from us, and that the link is in there, but you can go to the calendar page on the town webpage, and it'll direct you to the link. So how did we inform people about this? Nancy Baker, Assistant Town Manager, has sent out multiple invitations. Any week that there was one of these meetings, we sent an email invitation to all the town meeting members. We also did a mailing through the mail, because there were a small group of people who did not have emails. And in those invitations, we had all of these meetings listed, and we had the links, and we had phone numbers to call if there were any questions or problems. And members of our, of our committee, of our working group, have spent a lot of time on the phone and by email, talking to people one-on-one, trying to work out problems or questions that they might have. So now that we are a week away from this meeting, I think that all the work we have done, including the work that you as town meeting representatives, who answered the survey and have attended these trainings and meetings, I think it puts us in a good position to have a very productive town meeting. So what will happen? Town meeting representatives will receive an email from the town manager's office in the next day or two, asking you to register for the meeting. And registration is a very simple function. It'll ask for your name and your email address, and you hit click and return it to, to us. Once you do this, the system will automatically generate a second email with the link to the meeting, so the key to the meeting. Please save this link and have it for next Monday, November 30th. Do not share this link with anybody. This link is only for elected town meeting representatives. So if you're not feeling well that night, or if something comes up, you can't say to somebody, here, you go, click on this thing and sit in for me. You can't do that any more than you could send someone to town hall to sit in your seat for you with town meeting. So we're, we're under some scrutiny from the state. I think, as some of you may know, you've probably heard me say, the town meeting is actually, under Massachusetts law, an election. It's the same as an election. And so misrepresenting who's in the meeting is the same as somebody voting who's not entitled to vote. So please be very, very scrupulous about that. So you will get that automatic email with the link, the holy link. And on the night of town meeting at 6:15, we will send a reminder link out to everybody that's registered. So take note, if you don't register, you're going to have a little bit of a scramble getting into town meeting on the 30th. I mean, we'll do our best to accommodate you, but you do need to register the registration process, which, again, is just your name and your email address. That is what puts you on the list to receive the key to the door to town meeting. And if you lose it, we are going to send a second key to the door on about 6:15 on the night of town meeting. We would suggest and urge you to join the meeting by clicking on that link early, 6:15 or soon thereafter, so that we can resolve any little problems you might have, make sure your microphone's working, and this will greatly increase the chances that we start on time. Starting on time means that we have a better chance of ending on time, because this does take longer than regular town meeting. There are just a lot of behind-the-scenes things. There are, if you, if you've been to town meeting before, you know, you look up on the stage, and on one side, there's the Finance and War Committee, and on the other side, there are the entire staff to run the meeting. So this, myself, there's our town clerk, Paul Munchback, the Assistant Town Clerk, Kristen Morse, and the deputy moderator, Cheryl Anne Sheehan. That's it. That's all it takes. There are 12 to 15 people behind the scenes working on this meeting when we do it on Zoom. So it's, it is more complicated. So we really do want to start on time so that we can accommodate all the little extra steps we have to take, which we're going to describe in a minute. So you can click on the link, and then you can go have a bite to eat, or wash the dishes, or talk to your spouse, or talk to the kids, or whatever. You don't have to sit there staring at the screen, because you know we're not going to start before 7:00. You can't legally start before 7:00. And we do have to get a quorum, of course, which is the same for, for any, any town meeting. So now I'm going to ask Emily Torres Colonnain to briefly review the ways in which you participate in the meeting. So this is a very short form of the training that we've done, we've done for people, but it's just a good way to remind you. Also want to point out that in your warrant book, so this is the warrant book. I don't know, do you call that pink or salmon? But in there, there is a Zoom cheat sheet, which the people working on the, on the committee to set this meeting up are prepared and designed, some help from Emily and her folks, using their experience, and so that's in there as well. So Emily, a little bit of a review.
Great. Good evening, everyone, and it's nice to, to present to you once more as we prepare for a virtual town meeting next week. So one of the most important things that we want you to be able to do is be able to vote with a poll. So one of, one of the first activities we'll be doing is a poll. It's sort of a test poll. And so we want to make sure that you can click on the poll and that you can, your vote can be counted. Another function for town meeting that's very important is the hand-raising function. So many of you, hopefully, can see the hand-raising function in front of you. That is how we are going to be also voting throughout the evening. We'll also be using it as a way to call on you. So if you'd like to sort of find the hand raised right now, you can sort of test it, click on it, and then click on it once more. Raise your hand. Yep, I see some of your hands. Good. And then make sure to click on it again so that your hand is lowered. This is how we are going to be, again, taking comments and questions throughout the evening. And also, we are going to be using the hand-raising function for voting. So it's very important you know how to do that. Second or third is knowing how to unmute and mute yourself. So once you have raised your hand, we will be calling on you, and then we will ask you to unmute. And then you will click unmute, and then you can make a comment. So we just want to make sure you know how to mute and unmute yourself. We also want to make sure that you know how to fix any audio issues. So just to repeat, if you join between 6:15 and 6:45, the IT staff will be there, and so we can test microphones. If anybody wants to test microphones before town meeting starts, we can absolutely do that. There will also be an IT number displayed the whole evening. So if you have any IT questions, you can make sure to make that phone call. And then the last piece or last Zoom function that will be important for you to note is the Q and A function. So there will be an icon with two speech bubbles that say question and answer, and you would click on that for any points of order. So that will only be used to take points of order, and we will recognize those and answer those. Other than that, I think that's pretty much, that's pretty much it for the evening.
So let me talk a little bit about the two different ways of voting. You know that during town meeting, there are two ways of voting. One is the voice vote, and that is used for issues that there's not a lot of division or controversy over, things that we're pretty sure that we're going to be able to tell the majority just by listening to the a's and n's. Well, we can't do that on Zoom, so that's what the hands raised function is for. So on certain votes that I feel can be done, if we were in a regular town meeting, would have been done by a voice vote, I will do the hand-raising thing. So I will say, all those in favor, please raise your hand and keep it raised. Don't click off until we've, you know, counted it, and the Zoom program counts automatically for us. And then I'll say, okay, click it again and lower your hands. All those opposed, raise your hand. Same thing, leave your hand up until we count them, and then we will announce, announce the results. Not everything gets handled quite that easily, as you know. So sometimes we have to do a standing vote. So the equivalent for a standing vote using the Zoom platform is to take a poll. So the question will pop up right in front of you on the screen, Article, you know, 33. A little summation of what the article says, what the Finance Committee is recommending, and then do you vote yes or no? And you just click on it, and that will also automatically tabulate. Now, if for some reason during the vote, you're having some technical problem, and you don't think that your vote is being recorded correctly, you can't get the hand to go up or something like that, there will also be a phone number to call in and verbally give your vote. This really is only for, this is a last ditch, this is the emergency break. This is the last ditch effort to get your vote counted. It's not an alternative to doing the hand raise in the, in the polling. We have people who will be there, but you know, there, we don't have enough people to take, you know, 30 phone calls in every vote. So please do try to get the system to work. You can call the IT line, you know. If, if you're having trouble and you really can't solve it, then do call the number. But then afterwards, call the IT line to see if they can straighten it out. So for the next vote, you'd be able to do it. But everybody's vote will be counted, even if we have to do it the old-fashioned way and have to call a phone number and give your name and give what your vote is. So how will we start town meeting? Again, the goal is to make this as familiar and as consistent with current practice as possible. So those of you who are veterans of the town meeting know that we have some brief opening formalities. And once we have a quorum, we will do that, and then we will proceed to reading the article numbers, like I do at the regular town meeting. And the purpose of that is any article that people want to discuss or question, if you're in the regular town meeting, you'd call out the word "pass." Here, you will click on hand raise, so you'll raise your hand. And if, even if only one person wants to discuss it, and again, remember, at regular town meeting, if only one person calls out "pass," we set it aside. So if there's any article that is, there's a hand raise on, we'll set that aside. And then we go back and look at all of the articles that were not asked to be set aside. Nobody had a question or really wanted to talk about it, because a lot, you know, as you know, many of the articles are kind of housekeeping things that are fairly uncontroversial. So as we always do, we will accept the, the recommendation from the Finance Committee in one vote for all of those articles. And then, as we always do, we will go back and take up the ones that were set aside one by one. And I will go to, you know, Article 8. Is there anybody who wishes to speak or ask a question on Article 8? If that's something you want to do, you click on raise hand. The folks behind the scene will, will recognize you. And what we're going to do is, we will, unless you have a very, very quick question, like, remind me what article we're on, or something like that, you will be made a panelist temporarily. What does that mean? It means that your picture comes on the screen. So why are we doing that? Well, think at regular town meeting, if you get up to speak, everybody can see you. They know who you are. They might not recognize a name, but they might recognize a face. So I should backtrack. The, the permission to do virtual town meetings is because of an emergency law passed by the state. This is not, generally speaking, an allowable way to do a town meeting. And one of the points in the law is, is that we are supposed to make it as clear and as transparent and as visible as possible. So having people speak on an article without anybody knowing really quite who you are is, would not be acceptable. It's not a fair thing to do anyway, but it wouldn't be acceptable. So you will be made a panelist, which means these faces you see on the screen right now, they're all panelists, and you can say your piece, ask your question. And then we will call on somebody to answer your question. And that person will also be a panelist, so the two of you will be there. And assuming that everything gets resolved pretty well, then you both go back to being off the screen. So. Okay, I'm going to stop there, and if you have a question, you can hit the hand raise function, and Emily will see that, and she will call on you. Maybe this is an early evening. Anybody have any questions?
I see one hand. Lisa, if you click unmute, we can hear your question.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
How will attendance be taken? So how do you know I'm there?
When you click the link, we will know you're there.
Okay.
You join the meeting. We'll know.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
All righty, see another hand. Barbara Smith. You can click unmute.
Hi, I just wanted to try this out, so I'm all set.
Okay, that was a good idea, Barbara.
Okay, thanks.
And we're going to encourage people that when they're gained access to speak, you can tell that you are unmuted, because the little microphone in the corner of your screen will not have the line going through it. So we can probably save a little bit of time if everybody skips the "can you hear me now" question. So if you start to speak, and we can't hear you, we will say to you, you're not unmuted. So you won't need, you won't need to say that.
All right, you see Nicole has her hand up. I'm allowing you to speak, and if you can, please unmute.
I just have a question. What kind of securities are in place to make sure that, I'm saying town meeting members would do this, but if they forwarded the link on to other folks, if they tried to get in, is there some kind of, like, virtual bouncer who will be in place? Validating the email addresses for meeting members of people who join.
We do have the email addresses of people who have joined. You know, it's a little bit like the regular town meeting. It's extremely rare, but every once in a while, someone will question whether somebody should be in the room, and then we will, we will, we will look into it. With a remote meeting, if, you know, let's say Drew Popoli got his link, clicked on the meeting, and then, you know, walked away and said to, you know, somebody, here, you sit here, and didn't speak, didn't ask a question. You know, there is the possibility for, for misrepresentation there, but you know, there really isn't any way yet. I assume that if town meetings continue to be done virtually, which frankly, I hope is not the case, but if they are, you'll probably, Zoom will probably up their security measures. But I don't know, Lauren Goldberg, our town council, do you, have you seen anybody add any other layer other than treating the link as the key?
I have not personally, Mr. Moderator, although I know that we're talking about having the first thing that people do after they decide, I mean, the first thing that people do after they decide if we will have a remote town meeting, is to indicate that they are who they purport to be, and that they are going to carry out their duties in accordance with the law. So in some ways, it's very similar to what would happen if we were in person, and we're really putting the onus on town meeting members to, to do what they need to do and what they can do. And I, I think as well, when you described the interest of the Secretary of State's office in the Elections Division in town meeting, and you made the point that town meeting is essentially the same thing as elections, and that only registered voters may participate, and in Denham, only registered voters, who are also representative town meeting members, get to participate. And so, again, all of those people have been sworn already to comply with state law, and having someone else vote for you or in your place is not consistent with state law. So I think, you know, again, making that point was very useful, because that's true. So it's one part technology and one part people's, you know, swearing essentially to do the right thing.
And that all makes, thank you. That all makes sense to me. I guess I'm thinking, you know, I'm an instructional technology specialist at a high school, and so the beginning of the semester, I know that my school wasn't the only school that had a lot of issues of Zoom bombing, so it was just people sharing the link, so other people were getting access. And so I guess I'm not thinking so much that there's going to be false representation, but that there's going to be people who just try to, like, jump in, pause a little bit of a ruckus. So hopefully, that's not going to happen, but I just wanted to put that on folks' radar.
Yeah, Lauren.
Thank you. I wanted to ask Emily if there's going to be a waiting room set up, and so will people, will we do our best to check that the people that are signing in are the people that are the email addresses that we had been received?
So there won't be a waiting room, because we only gave the link to town meeting members. However, as people come in, we will be checking people's names. You know, we'll have some staff members from the town, sort of doing the quick check, quick eyeball of people's names. For anyone that doesn't have a name, like, it might say, you know, Nokia phone, or whatever it is. It might say a phone or a phone number. We will identify people and rename. And we will also have IT people very much aware of any disruptors. In order to speak, you do have to be recognized. In order to speak, you do have to be recognized. So the settings will all be so that people can't just unmute themselves. They have to raise their hand and then we have to allow people to unmute. And if anyone is sort of being disruptive, then we have a way to remove that person from the meeting. Is that, Nicole, does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Nicole, if in your experience, you have some other ideas, we could probably talk afterwards. And maybe if we ever have to do this again, we could be a little stronger.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, I see Chris has her hand up. His or her hand up can allow you to speak. Chris, you put your hand down, so I'm thinking maybe it was a mistake. There we go. All right, you can unmute.
I was just going to add to what she was saying. Couldn't you put in on the first poll question for them just to verify that they are who they have signed in to be?
Yes, that is, that is the first question.
That's, that's all, when she was talking about that.
Yeah. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
One additional piece of information that I think it's good for you to all know is as an attendee, you don't have access to the participants box. However, on the night of town meeting, we will have something set up so that when you look at the screen, you will see a PowerPoint presentation with the articles. You will see mostly the moderator speaking or whoever else speaking. And on the other side of the screen, you will actually be able to see the names of the town meeting members that are in the meeting. And you will also be able to see who has their hand up. So that is something that we are going to set up special for next Monday. That way you can see who's in the meeting, who has their hand up, how many people are in line to speak. Yes, Patty, so I'm going to allow you to speak. Patty Tobin, and you can unmute.
Hi, I'm wondering if we're going to have like a suggested timeframe, like, you know, when we'd ideally want this meeting to end? Because I could see it going extremely late with some of the topics that we discussed just the other night when we were going over the items, the articles to be voted on.
Yeah, and a bunch of us participated more in the background in that meeting. And I think we picked up some good ideas about what we can do with the regular town meeting that might, might shorten things. So for example, Patty, we have a list of which town official will respond to a question on each of the 30 articles. So if somebody asked a question, we would immediately switch to that designated panelist and they know they're the designated person. And so we would cut down on, a lot of what gets lost, and because I've been in a bunch of these meetings now, is the transitions from one thing to another. So we've tried to identify what the most common transitions are. And again, somebody kind of figuratively coming to the microphone to answer a question is something that, and you know, that, that can be 10 to 15 seconds, which is a lifetime when you're standing at the screen. And if you've got 30 articles, well, we won't be voting on all 30 because some of them will be, will be accepted. But then also, I picked up a bunch of questions at that, listening to the warrant review, and we're going to kind of preempt things. So for example, when I'm reading all of the articles, the ones that are indefinitely postponed, that were indefinitely postponed at the request of the person who proposed it, I'm going to say that at the time because there were a number of questions at the warrant review. Well, why is this article being indefinitely postponed? If the person who proposed it asked it to be indefinitely postponed, we're going to, we're going to say that, try to cut down on.
Yeah, that definitely helps. I mean, I know this is all a work in progress for sure.
It is. I don't know how many virtual town meetings have been done in Massachusetts. You know, it's a small number, you know, it's growing every week, but it's still a small number. To answer your, your underlying question, the town meeting goes either until it's finished or unless somebody makes moves that it be adjourned. And that takes a majority vote to adjourn the meeting. The plan is, the recommendation is that if there is a successful motion to adjourn the meeting, that we would meet the following evening. We haven't had to do this in dead end in recent years. In some towns, the meetings can go on a number of nights.
Exactly.
We've kind of figured out some procedures to move things along. But you know, this is, this is a new frontier for us.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I see Carrie, your hand is up, so you can, you're allowed to speak and you can unmute yourself. Carrie Hawkins, are you there? Yep.
In the past, we've gone through the articles and people say pass. Maybe I missed something? Is that how we're gonna, are we going to do this?
Yeah, instead of, instead of people yelling out the word pass, which they wouldn't be able to do anyways since they're muted, we're going to use the raise hand function.
Okay, great.
You want to set something aside for discussion, just click raise hand. And again, it only takes one person to ask for something to be set aside.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I see another question, Nicole. Yes, go ahead.
Hi, sorry, I'm wondering about the polling feature. So, and I'm sorry if you said this before, they will not be, or we will not be raising our hands for that. The poll pops up and you have the option. No, or on the other.
You're fading out, Nicole.
I'm sorry. For the, the polling feature that will pop up, that's something where folks will not be raising their hand, correct? It's like a yes or a no option that they can click on within the poll?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Could lower your hand, Nicole. Just click on it one more time.
Sorry, thank you.
Any other questions for our first ever virtual town meeting? Okay, if there are no other questions, I think we can wrap things up. If you look in your warrant book, there's, there's always a letter from, it's a couple of letters in the front, but there's one from me and it has my, my email address and my cell phone number. Please feel free to get in touch with me if you have any problems between now and next Monday. And we look forward to seeing you. We hope to start as soon as we can on time and encourage you to, well, we really encourage you to register or else you're going to have a hard time participating. But after you get that link and it's, even if it's six to six fifteen, to click on that link and then you can wander away until about, I'd say five minutes to seven. Okay, my thanks to, to Emily and Amber for being the behind the scenes person. Although Emily, you're not really behind the scenes, you're in the, we appreciate the, the technical work you folks do and the experience you have in the other town meetings.
And there's one hand up.
Okay.
Sure, to get Carrie, if that, if you have a question, Carrie, you can unmute yourself.
How many people have come to this meeting?
This meeting, there are 28 people in this meeting.
Great, okay. Thanks.
Okay. All right, everybody. Thank you very much for spending some time with us this evening and we look forward to seeing you all on November 30th at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodnight.